We're live.
Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. I now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
No, looks like Mr. Hallgren has frozen up.
Did you hear me?
I did, yeah, we did hear you, Gina.
Okay.
All right, so we left off at trustee Kennedy. Who's left?
I'm here. Trustee Plunkett's here.
Plunkett's here. My apologies, I didn't have the list in front of me. Peter, who else do we have?
Just President Blinsky, I think.
President Blinsky?
I am here and trustee Sullivan is absent. So, we have, by my count, we have six members of the board present. That is a quorum. I'm going to mute everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone is now on mute except for me. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams software and I'll now ask, Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, President Blinsky. Okay, so everybody, as President Blinsky just said, you've been muted at the start of the meeting tonight. And when President Blinsky calls for public comment, those of you joining with the Teams or Microsoft Teams client can toggle your mute status by clicking on the microphone icon in the meeting toolbar, which would either be up near the top right of your screen, near the leave button, or possibly in the bottom center, depending on what device you joined the meeting with. And those joining us by audio conference, I saw a couple join in here just a short time ago. Reminder that you can toggle your mute status by pressing star six on your telephone, and that's both to mute and unmute yourself. And no one can unmute another attendee, so you do have to figure out how to unmute yourself when it's your turn to provide your comments. And in the event of technical difficulties in you providing your commentary, please head over to the YouTube livestream that will be discussed here shortly. Type your comment in over there and then at the appropriate time, I will read it back into the record here in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skiles. For those of you watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor JB Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has amended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So we're conducting our business tonight in compliance with the provisions of state law. Now, as usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel number six and on the internet on our YouTube site, which I will read the URL for. It's www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. And there are no dashes, periods, or anything like that, and I'll read it one more time. Recording of the meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website, as we do with all of our other televised public meetings. As Mr. Skiles alluded to, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation, so to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you send an email to publiccomment@willmet.com, prior to the start of the meeting, your email has been provided to the board members and it will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. And as Mr. Skiles said, he will read your comments to the Village Board. And for those of you who have connected to the meeting via the Microsoft Teams software or via the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. And because of the logistical difficulties of not being together in person, I will first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board. I will then assemble a list and then call on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, you will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as you would have been during an in-person meeting. All comments from the public, regardless of how we receive them, will be recorded into the meetings of the minutes, as we usually do. And I've just muted everyone. And, so please keep yourself muted. And to unmute yourself, I'll go over the instructions again, but please keep yourself muted until you're ready to speak. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 194 pages. So moving on, item two is public comment. And as I said, at an in-person meeting, during public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. However, this meeting is remote, so public comments, which were submitted by an email in advance of the meeting, have been provided to the board members. And they are part of the public record, but they will not be read live during the meeting. So if you are watching on YouTube Live now, this is the opportunity for you to submit comments for the village staff to read. The chat window is to the right of the YouTube Live video window and type your comments in now and we'll see if we get any. If we do, Mr. Skiles will read them. While people are typing, I will ask if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to address the board. And again, depending on your version of the device you're on, either the upper right, there's a little microphone, or if you move your mouse in the middle, it may pop up there, but you can unmute yourself in that way. And for people who have dialed in via the telephone, you typically have to hit star six to unmute yourself. So if there are individuals who would like to address the board now, please let me know and I will create a list of those people.
Can I speak to? Hey, this is Mark Wiremueller. Can you hear me? Can I speak tonight?
Yes, Mr. Wiremueller, we can hear you and I will put you on the list.
Okay, then I'll stay muted till you give me the signal. Is that correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else who would like to address the board? Okay, Mr. Skiles, were there any YouTube chat comments submitted?
No, no comments beyond Mr. Wiremueller.
Okay, so Mr. Wiremueller, we can hear you. You have three minutes to address the board. The floor is yours.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can still hear you, yes.
Okay, this is Mark Wiremueller, Willmet resident, 21 years. I tried to do the Teams Act app and it doesn't work for me, so I wanted you guys to see me on video, so. But I'll continue speaking. Again, it's Mark Wiremueller, Willmet resident, 21 years. I'm very upset that this is a complete violation of Open Meetings Act. I've talked to a number of people, a number of people contacted me, and I know you guys said I was 100% wrong. Some people said I was 80% wrong. One person said I was 100% right. But we need to get these meetings open. We can wear a mask, we can come in six-foot distance, we could do them out in front of the village hall, but we need to get these meetings open again. This idea of doing this, and I have somebody helping me now because I couldn't get the app to work right. So with that in mind, again, I want these meetings to be open. We need them open to the public. You guys saying last week that I was 100% wrong, I thought was kind of condescending towards me because I'm not 100% wrong. The Open Meetings Act is the Open Meetings Act. We need the meetings open. Second point, I'm trying to find out, my proposal last week to extend packaged liquor sales, which are now 10:00 PM at a grocery store like Jewel in Willmet. I want to extend it till midnight. I understand the Judiciary Committee would consider it. I've had no communication with any board members asking me my thoughts or anything, but that's my proposal, that from packaged liquor sales, which is like buying a beer, six packs of beer at Jewel at 10:05, I'm not allowed to do. Yet I am allowed to do it in six surrounding communities, including Glenview, Evanston, Northbrook, Northfield, and Skokie. The Jewel in Skokie is open till midnight. You can buy liquor there till midnight. So that's my thought. It will increase commerce. Everyone says shop local. I hear this from board members all the time. They talk about shopping local, but I don't see them doing it. So I want to see if we can do that. Other than that, that's all I have tonight, and I appreciate you guys giving me the chance to talk. I look forward to speaking in person, so you can see me in person and we can get this back to the, like basically, like I said, we can get these things going. And COVID's gone away, people are getting the vaccine, people, there's no pandemic left. Things are getting back to normal. Let's get Willmet, let's get the leaders of Willmet to set the stage and be leaders and show us that we can reopen Illinois right now. Thank you, and that's the end of my comments. Mark Wiremueller, again, from Willmet.
Thank you, Mr. Wiremueller. I'm going to respond again. I apologize if you felt I was condescending to you last week, but when you accuse us of breaking the law, I am going to say that you're wrong. I'm going to ask my lawyer to say that you're wrong because we don't break the law. So we are in compliance with the Open Meeting Act. I did ask my attorney last week to confirm that, or last meeting to confirm that for you, and that is the case. So that's just the facts, that we are in compliance with the Open Meeting Act. With regards to your request, item 3.16 on this week's agenda, if you picked that up off the internet, you can see that we actually referred the question that you raised to the Judiciary Committee in this meeting. So when we vote on the consent agenda tonight, we are actually taking action on your suggestion. So, thought you'd want to know that as well. Okay? All right, I'm going to mute you again, Mr. Wiremueller, because I can do that from here, I think. Yep. All right, so we'll get the background noise out. And, so Mr. Skiles, I already asked you if there was anybody from YouTube Live chat and you said there was not?
Correct, no additional comments.
Okay, very good. Then, so we are done with public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item three is the consent agenda, and as described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the consent agenda. So tonight, we flip the pages here. It's all the items that begin with the number three, and that's items 3.1 through items 3.17. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and will not be discussed. So I will begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. People who are watching on YouTube Live should now submit their requests. And again, I will go to the phones and the Microsoft Teams software. Are there any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Teams or the telephone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Please identify yourself now. And again, you have to unmute yourself. And if you're on the phone, you have to hit star six to unmute yourself. So is there anyone who would like to remove something from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Skiles, has anybody typed anything into YouTube Live?
No comments, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. So are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda tonight? I can see all six of you and you're all nodding your heads no. Okay, so I will now ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, so that was trustee Dodd's motion, trustee Kennedy's second. It's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
And President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted. If you are dialed in for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved. And I'll clarify for people who are watching tonight, all the items, again, beginning with the number three, have been approved, and that includes land use items 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7. So if you are here for one of those items, it's been approved and there will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda. So you are free to log off, hang up, you know, tune to a different station, but of course, you're more than welcome to watch the rest of our meeting here tonight as well. So move on to item four, which is Report of Officers. We'll start with our report from our village manager, Mr. Bremen.
Thank you, President Blinsky. I have two items tonight. The first is to inform the board and the community that we held a successful vaccination clinic today for 1,160 senior citizens and individuals in the 1B-plus category for residents of Willmet and some of our surrounding neighbors. I wanted to thank New Tru High School for once again hosting the site, as well as our partners at the Willmet Library and the Willmet Park District, whose employees helped us staff our call center on Friday and Monday and also helped us staff the clinic today with administrative support. So it was a really great team effort. Really glad to get this done for our residents. The second clinic for all these individuals will be in April, and we'll continue our efforts with Jewel and through our MABUS pod to advance and accelerate the rollout to our residents in our community. The other item I have to report is an announcement of the hiring of a new fire chief. We have appointed Brian Lambell, the fire chief in Mount Prospect, to be our next chief. Chief Lambell has 31 years of experience in the fire service. He's served as chief in Mount Prospect for the last five. We have a complete press release on our website, but just to inform the board and the community of his background, he is a master of public administration and strategic public management and leadership from Northern Illinois University. He's a certified chief fire officer and also serves on the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association Director Board and on their Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We're really excited to have Brian join our team. He'll start May 3, and during the month of May, we will have him attend a meeting to introduce him to the Village Board and to the community. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen. I think one other thing worth mentioning regarding the recent vaccination clinic was, all of the registration was done via the phone. Is that correct? The idea was that for seniors in particular, who are less comfortable with technology, we set this up sort of old-school with a call center and, you know, giving people your name over the phone to make it easier for them. I think that's the case here, correct?
That's correct. That was our goal, is to try to reach seniors and other residents who are having trouble accessing appointments via the technology. That's really the significant, or the most, the way most people are finding their appointments. So that was really helpful. We were also able to roll all of our residents who are using our Community Caretaker Assistance Program into this site. So those were folks who were really having a hard time finding appointments on their own. So the goal was to find our most vulnerable residents and get them signed up. And we accomplished that to some degree. We know there's more out there. We're going to keep our work going to get all of those done.
That's great, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Bremen. Our next report is from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Next item on the agenda is item five, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight from the Liquor Control Commissioner. So we'll move on to our Standing Aide Committee reports. That's item six. The first one is item 6.1, and that is trustee Barrow with the Land Use Committee Standing Report.
All items around the consent agenda?
Next item is the Finance Committee, and that is trustee Kennedy.
All items were on consent?
Next is the Administration Committee, trustee Dodd.
Yes, we have one item off consent. It's the First Quarter Boards and Commissions Report, and I believe I will be turning that over to Mr. Bremen.
All right. Thank you, trustee Dodd. I'm going to share my screen here and we're going to walk through the report briefly and answer any questions that the board may have. All right, so is this the first page of the report showing up on everyone's screen?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good. So this was an item that came out of the Administration Committee's review of our boards and commissions last year. And that was to provide a quarterly report to the Village Board and to the community regarding the status of our boards and commissions, the number of members.
Mr. Bremen, we just lost-
Sorry, I moved it.
Okay.
All right, is that better?
Yes, you're back.
Okay. All right, so it's to provide an overview on the number of members on each of our boards and commissions actively, how many vacancies we have, how many talent bank questionnaires we have on file, and also importantly, to identify upcoming vacancies, as well as the expertise of individuals currently serving. So what I'm going to do is just explain the first two pages of this report and then show a sample on the third page of how we're presenting each board and commission. So here on this first page, there's a table. This is a general overview of all of our boards and commissions. The first row here, number of members, are how many members by statute we are to appoint to these boards and commissions. So we have a total of 77 positions on our volunteer boards and commissions. Current membership here are the number of individuals serving right now, able to attend the meetings and help meet quorum. So we have 71. So we have six less than the total number of members. This table gets a little confusing because of the way our village code works, which allows certain individuals whose terms have expired to continue to serve. And that's this column here. So first, we show the number of vacancies on each board or commission. So for example, Appearance Review has no vacancies, Electrical Commission has three, and then the Environmental Commission has two vacancies, but one member is continuing to serve, which makes up one of this eight here. And then that person would roll off when a new commissioner is appointed by the Village Board. So as you can see in this column here, we have eight vacancies. Two of those eight are still serving, so one on the Environmental and Energy Commission and one on the Human Relations Commission. Now, of these vacancies on the Human Relations Commission, the two are for our student members. We're currently in process of reviewing submittals that were facilitated through the high school and through our TBQ process, and President Blinsky is intending to place recommendations of appointment on our April agendas. And then that Human Relations Commission will be up to nine members. And the last column here is the number of TBQs we have on file. So we're counting from 2019 through present. You can see the bulk here of housing and human relations largely due to the committee's work this past summer and fall and our efforts to get the word out and soliciting talent bank questionnaires. So we have a total of 164 talent bank questionnaires on file right now. Moving down to the second page, this table here explains each of the vacancies we currently have. So it lists the board and commission. Michael Kim was the vacancy. He was vacant as of October 22, 2020. And then we explain the reason for the vacancy. There's several different reasons a vacancy may arise. His term had expired. He is not able to continue serving due to his schedule, so he is not on the commission any longer. Alternatively, Arthur Hupp on the Energy, Environmental, and Energy Commission, while his term has expired, he is continuing to serve until a replacement is appointed. Moving down to upcoming vacancies, the committee had asked staff to provide a forecast of future vacancies that would largely help lay a blueprint for the village staff to make sure we're advertising for these vacancies, whether it's through our communicator, through our e-news, or through our social media. And in those efforts, we're focusing on positions that are not eligible for reappointment. So here on the Plan Commission, Stephen Schwab, he is, his position is vacant as of April 23, 2021. We have started our recruitment efforts. You may have seen in our last e-news a blurb on this vacancy on the Plan Commission. And for each of these vacancies where the individual is not eligible for appointment, we're also listing the preferred experience in the village code, which will help us communicate that to our residents. So as we move forward with each quarter, these tables will change and they'll be updated. And then for each board or commission, we have a detailed table of each member, their appointment date, their reappointment date, when their term expires, whether they're eligible for reappointment, and what their background or experience is. And as you review the nine pages of this report, it really is incredibly impressive, the background, the experience, and the expertise we have serving on all of our boards and commissions. And under each table, we also list the preferred or required experience necessary. Most of our boards and commissions are preferred. For example, Electrical Commission, where we have three vacancies, it is a required set of experience or expertise we need. So fire chief, that position will be filled once chief Lambell starts here in Willmet. And then we have vacancies for these specific positions, a professional engineer and an electrical contractor. And the same table repeats for each of our boards and commissions. We did share this table with each of the members, asking them to confirm that the background or experience we've identified was appropriate and what they wanted to put forward. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and we'd anticipate including another report towards the end of the second quarter of this year.
I have a question on the first page.
Okay.
So the TBQs on file, it says 164. Is that 164 separate residents TBQs? Or, I mean, when you fill out a talent bank questionnaire, you can mark, you know, several boxes?
That's a good question. That is per each one, so it's not total number of individuals. It's interest per each board or commission.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that could be substantially less because you'll often see a talent bank questionnaire that might have six or eight boxes checked. And did that, has that removed people who have been appointed? Because I, you know, when I get, when I ask for sort of the current talent bank questionnaires on file, oftentimes I'll get, you know, one and that person has already been appointed to a board or a commission. So have we cleaned that up on that?
Theoretically, it should. So we will double-check that our future reports do that.
Okay.
So Mike, this is Kathy. I have a couple of questions, actually. So first of all, I think this is a really great start and I'm really, thank you for all the time and effort you've put into getting this started and presenting this to the board as an opportunity for us to provide some feedback. So I think it looks really great and clearly there's a lot of detail here. So one of the questions I had was, when we spoke, I believe, as Administration Committee and talked about this report, one of the main goals of this report was really using it as a communication vehicle to the community as well as the board about some upcoming vacancies, right? So it was kind of a starting point. There are obviously, there's maybe not a large percentage of the community that's interested in this, but there are a number of members in the community who are very interested in it. It's a way, it's the start of us communicating what is the vacancies. And so I just wondered, I have a couple of questions related to that. So one would be, in addition to kind of communicating the upcoming vacancies, would it be possible, I think, I think a next additional step that would be nice, if it's possible, is to include the kind of experience we're looking for? So I, you know, so we're going, I'm going to use Plan Commission just as an example even, well, I guess it's a good example because it's the, it's listed right there in terms of the qualifications. So, you know, it says we're looking for architects, real estate, law, finance, landscaper, whatever. And so I wonder if it would be possible to help identify, because I think this is part of where we were trying to get to, is to know, okay, given the makeup of the current board, current commission, what might be the skill sets we're looking for and could that be provided here? Because it's a mechanism, again, for the, anybody in the community to reach out to somebody that might know that has one or two of those skill sets. And I recognize it can't, we can't be so narrow, but would that be something we think we could add to this?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. And we can talk to the staff liaison and the chair of the board and commission for that insight. And I think, I could be wrong, I think we may have done that for previous e-news blasts on specific board and commissions, I think for EEC recently. I think that was very helpful, so we should keep doing that and also can add that to the report, for sure.
Yeah, and historically, historically, when we've had vacancies where, you know, you're looking for an architect, for example, you know, the staff member would at the, at a, at an ARC meeting say, hey, we have some vacancies coming up, so all the architects that are on the ARC already, you know, if you have some friends, let us know. And I think that's how Charlie Smith, and I think that's how Jeff Saad, and I think those are, those two that are currently serving, that's how they, you know, were introduced to, to the opportunity to volunteer.
And I think that's great. And so my point is just, I think it'd be really nice to have it here on this report as well, because then it's a, it's a nice way for the board members and others who might be interested in the community to kind of know what we're looking for in terms of these particular openings. Okay, the second question I have is just regarding the two, can you, let me see. Regarding the two EEC vacancies. So can you, so can you just share with us, as well as those who are listening, just kind of the communication we've done regarding those? Because it looks like we have two vacancies, one of which has been open for a little more than a year. Obviously, this has been an unusual time, but I think it'd be helpful to talk about that.
Yeah, and let me, let me, let me interject there for a second, trustee Dodd. So we've actually, interestingly enough, had two or three candidates that I've talked to that were great candidates that were interested. Two, two, well, one of them is in process still talking to Chair Wolf. The other talked to Chair Wolf and said, I don't have the time for this. And the third, in between saying, yes, I'd like to be involved, got an offer of a job in Washington and was thinking about moving to Washington, so withdrew his name from consideration. So there's actually been a number of conversations here. And philosophically, for the EEC, my approach has been that I really want technical expertise. And if you look at, I mean, if you look at the EEC, there is a lot of technical expertise. So from my point of view, and the next village president could have a different point of view, certainly, I'm really only recommending people for the EEC who have real technical expertise that's applicable. So there have been a number of conversations. We just haven't come upon someone who's willing to take it on right now. But literally in the last six months, there's been three different candidates who both Julie and I have spoken to about coming onto the EEC.
And to answer the question on communications, we used our e-news and our social media, but we- but we also reached out to organizations like Go Green Willmet. I think we also reached out to the League of Women Voters, asking them to share that vacancy with their listserv, and I believe Bruce Davidson came through our Go Green Willmet efforts. So that was effective, and we'll continue to do that moving forward.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, just to ask so many, I have one last question. Can you just clarify for me then, and maybe this is something I just didn't understand, for the, for the HRC, wait, let me, hold on, let me look at something. I'm going to make sure I s- Oh yeah, for, for the HRC, Jerry Smith, is he only been appointed temporarily? Why is-
He wasn't, he wasn't actually really appointed. He just was not replaced. So Jerry was appointed a long time ago, and, you know, when we, when we put the HRC, sort of reconstituted the HRC, the thought was, for continuity purposes, and because his background is awesome, and Jerry's been doing this for a while, to keep Jerry in the chair position until sort of the Commission got off and rolling. And, you know, he and I talked, and there wasn't a specific time period set, but he and I talked, and he agreed to do that, and sort of as, as the Commission got its work going, there might have been someone who sort of stood out as the person who would take Jerry's spot. But, but Jerry wasn't, we actually didn't reappoint him. He just wasn't replaced.
But so does his term truly expire 9/118, or are we-
Yes. Right, Mike?
Yes, and by Village Code, he's allowed to continue to serve until a replacement is appointed.
Right, so that's the next Village President's, you know, conversations with Jerry about what the right time for him to step, step aside, and, and frankly, the next Village President can make that decision on their own, but I suspect they would, you know, consult with, with Jerry on it.
Okay.
And as Mike alluded to, the two student vacancies, you should be seeing something per the process this week on that for the next Board meeting.
This is Trustee Kennedy. I was going to ask about that, because there's less than three months left of the school year, so how are we sort of-
It was-
-getting the appointment with the school year?
January to January was the thought.
Okay.
So these are, these aren't seniors, these are sophomores and juniors.
Okay.
President Polinski, a follow-up on the, on the student members, and if, if it's best to defer this to the next Board meeting when we speak of this, fine, but will you be sharing with us the, the nature and the quality of your communications, both to the high school and their communications back, and the process by which the high school internally used to identify and select candidates?
Mr. Bremen, I leave that to you. Do you want to talk about that now, or do you want to make that part of next, next meeting?
I can give a very high-level overview now, and then we can discuss it more at the next meeting, but we approached this from two different avenues. The process was open to any student member through our standard TBQ submittal process, so they didn't necessarily have to go through the school. We also, I emailed directly each of the principals for the high schools that serve our area, asking them to submit two, three, or four names for us to consider, and as part of that submittal, for those students to provide a paragraph explaining their background and why they wanted to serve. So we had Nutria submit a handful of students, Loyola submitted a student, and then we also had additional students just through our standard process. I think in total, we had seven applicants.
And do we know what, what the schools did internally to publicize the, this membership on this Board?
I don't know right now, but we can get that for the next Board meeting.
I'd like, I'd like to know what, what, what each of them did to, to contact their students and explain, explain what this involves.
I agree, Trustee Barrow, that would be interesting information. I would point out that we can't make them do anything, though.
I, I get that, but I just, you know-
I think, I think it's helpful, I agree, I agree.
Transparent is our mantra, you know that.
Yes. So, and I, and as will be mentioned in the memo, and was mentioned in my memo on this, when we, when I recommended the Board to appoint the HRC members, I think in the spirit of sort of including as many people as possible in this process, at least my view on it, and again, the next Village President can take their own view on it, this isn't codified, but we're going to have one student from Nutria and one student from another school. And the thought was that if every year, two students get appointed from Nutria, then we will get no applications from any of the other schools, whether it be North Shore Country Day, Loyola, Regina, or any of the other schools that, you know, high school students in Willmet attend. So, again, you'll see a memo on that this week, as our process has evolved into that.
Thank you. I think it's really a great thing. I don't know if any of our other neighbors do anything similar, but I just think it's a terrific thing that Willmet is bringing these students in in a real meaningful way, full members, voting members, full participants.
I agree.
It's, it's a terrific addition.
They, I think they get to file their statement of economic interests, too, just like a full member. Any, any other questions for Mr. Bremen, or Trustee Dodd, is that, was that your, I thought you said that was your last question, but if it wasn't your last question, I turned the floor.
Yes, that was my last question.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff here? Any, any other comments? And I would just like to say, look, I do think it's time to thank, again, all the volunteer members of our Boards and Commissions, and, you know, this information, to some extent, like, lays down on paper what I already knew intrinsically, because I've met all the people that I've recommended, and all the people that the Board has appointed, but it's really quite a talented group of individuals. You know, our residents are busy, in particular, people who have sort of these types of skills, for them to volunteer their time to the community is just wonderful, and I think it's, I think it's something that makes Willmet a very special place. So I thank all of them publicly for their service on our Boards and Commissions. Mr. Stein, I, I don't think it's required, but I think I will, there aren't a lot of visitors here, but I will open the floor for public comment, that's allowed, correct?
Absolutely. You're, you're the Chair, you can recognize who you like.
I have to go to my public comment script here. So if there are any individuals who are connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the phone, and would like to make a comment on this matter, please unmute yourself now, and I will create a list and then recognize people individually. If you are on YouTube Live, you can type something into the chat window, and a member of the staff, actually, Mr. Skiles, will, will read your comments. So for the folks on YouTube, start typing now, and for the folks who are attending the meeting via phone or via Microsoft Teams, if you unmute yourself, I will compile a list Just looking at the attendees, only three or four that aren't staff or Board members. All right, hearing none, Mr. Skiles, anyone out in YouTube land interested in commenting?
There are no comments on YouTube Live.
Okay. All right, so I think this concludes this matter. Trustee Dodd, back to you.
All other items were covered on consent.
Okay. The Municipal Services Committee had two items that were covered on consent. The Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman.
No report.
And the Judiciary Committee, Trustee Plunkett.
All items were on consent.
And item, actually, that's not on here tonight, there, the, the, oh wait, there it is, item 6.7, reports from special committees, there are no reports tonight. Item seven is new business, I'm not aware of any new business to discuss tonight, so we will move on to item eight, which is adjournment, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was Trustee Plunkett, I believe. And is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Barrow. Would ask the clerk to please call the role on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Polinski.
Aye, so the motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, we'll see you-